Everybody is livable. I should say that, they're livable. I haven't had another complaint on that, so. Again, there's the dust, noise, and smoke complaint. Again, it was a verbal. I just put that in for your information.
There was smoke from California.
Yeah. You can't really tell, can you? And as you can see, there's seventeen due diligence inquiries regarding property in the town of Daniel. That's why things are moving again on the market. So we're really getting a lot of calls from them. Any other questions?
You said seventeen?
Seventeen. The month of July. That's just what I take them out on the PDA usually shows most calls during the day, so. And I usually get in my office the verbal version of when doing any of these things that I ask them to put in their writing. And many times folks don't want to put their hand, their name on it, but I certainly hear about many things and certainly everything that's been on the market.
Can I just ask? I mean, because I've always had issue with this. I know it doesn't need to be official. But if you don't know it's broke, how do you fix it? And I think in so many cases, you get this animosity because they came to the council to come to them. Rather than just having that verbal complaint go to the person saying, hey neighbor, this is a problem.
Would be the best convenience. We encourage that kind of way.
It just seems unreal to me that it goes to the point of a hundred or whatever signatures on a petition. But for one person can just ask that it be resolved.
One person can sign a complaint.
Right.
That will initiate the council to.
Before signing it. I just think, I guess, I think there's an order of operations. I verbally say something to the neighbor and if he does not respond, then I go to a council. Unless I am afraid of my neighbor. Which I think is so often not the case. I'm wondering why we're skipping that step or if we need to advise people to talk to your neighbor when they get a verbal complaint.
That is the preferred method.
Are we verbalizing that to people?
Absolutely.
Will you talk to your neighbor? Because it seems like we solve so many problems.
In this case, it didn't, no. It actually brought the law enforcement out.
And I think there are points. There are definitely, that's why you guys are here. There are cases where you ask your neighbor and your neighbor doesn't respond, I think that's.
But again, people have the right to enjoy their property. And if this is, this is why we're at town. And so if it takes me going out and saying that, that's okay. That's a service we provide. And I will go out and talk. Like I said, I have not ran into anybody that's been threatening to me or been. They just want to work it out. Most, like I said, everybody out there just wants to get along. We have things in place if they don't. But everybody out there just wants to get along. They want to clean it up. They want everybody to be happy. And so we've been really lucky here to do that. I know that doesn't happen in the cities, which is a different thing, but we've been lucky here. And so this avenue here is absolutely the way to get it. And it's unfortunate that they haven't went and talked to them, but they don't have to. This is, this is just a way that they will know that the neighbors are having issues. And that's a service we provide. Okay, so down on notes, you'll notice there's a, and everybody here should probably be to this next meeting. The bypass corridor has been officially shut down with UDOT McCammy in our last meeting. They officially will not call it a bypass at this point. It's never going to be a bypass. So Heber City has picked up the ball and they have a public meeting with UDOT Heber City with the bypass in Main Street corridor. And it's August 8th from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Senior Center. So they'll be rerouting, looking at routes to get traffic around Heber. And this is preliminary, so if you get in on it, you'll have some say in. I mean, we've talked to the other ones to death, but the access is. With the annexations that's happened and the accesses onto that road, they've brought the speed limit down so far that they said it will never be a viable bypass. And so we talked it right out of being a bypass, is what happened in Canada.
Do you by chance know that for all the extra $10 that they purchased on the ground and that was going up that direction?
I do not. I can tell you that at the public hearing when they initiated there, it was me and Ernie Giles who was there talking to. Wow. We were the two public talking, talking in opposition of that fee. And we were promised in that meeting if they hadn't do something within a year, they would be returning that. It would no longer be there. Well, that fee still, in case you haven't noticed, when you license your car or your motorbike or your boat or.
I heard the same thing that you said and it just will be charged.
Yes. So again, I actually brought that up in a couple of meetings. Not popular when you do that, by the way. And then, as mentioned before, Commissioner Norris mentioned that the general plan is under review. We're really required every five years to review the general plan. And so there are a few things that we do in the town that's required by state statute that we review. And so that review is underway right now at the planning commission. So if anybody has any, anything you read on that, it's on the website, read it. If you have anything that needs to be changed or upgraded, we'll get that in as a recommendation to the council. If they want to change that, we'll hold the public hearing and move through that process in that direction. Okay? All right. That's all you got.
Okay.
No more questions? I like it.
Well, item number six would be Daniel municipal water issues is necessary. I'd like to hear the issues first and I know there's a particular issue, we'll hear that maybe after the general issues, if there are general issues. Give your thumbs up on the first part and we'll talk about the second part or whatever you want to do.
Well, we do have something to discuss here.
Okay.
I think, Governor, you want us to, you want us to address it?
Well, honestly.
If you do, come up and state it for the record and we'll go from that point.
I'm Mr. Reddick Press. Probably the newest company. And to me, my problem is not this. Problem is that I owe some money. I don't know if anything's watered. I asked Gary that if I wanted to solve my problem, I should have come here. I honestly didn't know what this was about. But my only problem is that I need to ask council or give some reasonable time to pay my debt. My fees. I don't see, not a small fee, I know it. It's been doing, only for a while. I need some time to get my payment.
I motion to approve that and have him work out, Gary.
Let me tell the rest of the story. There's a little bit that's not told here, John.
You sure want to know?
You don't.
That's why I said.
Two months ago, we also had that discussion. And it was very, very, very clear, three months ago. There you go. Well, three months ago, it was very, very clear. This building taken care of in the immediate future. A very large allowance is made for that. It's been three months and it has not been resolved. I believe that the council and through me was very generous and to even let that happen in the situation it did. I'm not going to have the council go one way or the other from what you feel. I just need, want you to know that it has been dealt with three months ago. There was a timeframe put on it and the timeframe is here and it's not solved. At the beginning, when this agreement was made, it would be paid in full. Otherwise, the water service would be terminated. The council can take that issue and deal with, at least so you know the other side of the story.
How much money is involved?
Fifteen?
Did any of you take the $10?
Well, it was somewhere around $4,000. So the first time we talked, I gave him $2,000 and I agreed and paid. And this was just by, it wasn't even signed. And I agreed I didn't pay it. I mean, I should have paid it by now. I haven't been able to give you information or something. But I think everybody has had problems.
A little bit.
Absolutely.
In this bid, we're on for a good time, for two years. Quite worked with Roberto and worked with him and he purchased his old house. It's not our fault, it's not the town's fault, but he had numerous water leaks and he kept thinking he had it fixed. He's right, he did the next month and it wasn't fixed. It was continuing high open, high open decisions. I spent at least a couple hours with him that day trying to help resolve things underneath the house. And Roberto said I don't know what to do and then all of a sudden he could find a place for the water.
And the last two months, I've been.
I just want you to know.
Well, it was a leak. Well, it sounded, it was under a crawl space, but this property was built piece by piece. He can keep adding stuff. So I believe the owner would just add pipes to whatever he needed. He didn't do any organizing. And. He's gone.
By the way, welcome to North Town.
Oh, thank you very much.
I didn't see what he called it. So he was aware and he actually personally told me that he knew that there could be a leak and he should have gone on it sooner, but he didn't. And I don't know how, what that timeframe would have been, but he knows that things could have happened better and that's why it's not just something that happened tonight and.
And just, I don't know, this is on my defense. It's not about the house. I had to replace gas pipes because of leaks in gas pipe. I had to replace all the electric lineways. So there's been those kind of problems around the house that I know I should have taken care of. You know, when it was mine, it didn't happen.
So what do you propose now?
Well, I know I have to pay it, I know I need the service. Probably the best I can come up with is pay half, say this next coming weekend and in two more weeks, pay the rest. That's probably the best that I could come up with.
I'm sorry.
Two weeks of pay half?
Well, this weekend, half.
This weekend, half.
Next two weeks, the rest.
And then in two weeks, the rest.
And contrary of the same time, I would be willing to sign differently than what we did the first time.
Take care of the next 30 days back to.
So I have before, oh, I have some questions. So is the high expense due to a leak?
Yes.
An over usage leak?
Our policy, what our policy was then with the town since we moved, it was before we moved to town. This workup usually, front of workup, was that we rent the meter and if they had an over usage, I would use it. That can lead to a leak unless the kids left the home or something.
Yeah.
And so the policy was that we were not charging for it.
We forgive that.
If they fixed it within that month and that period, we'd read it on the first of every month. This is a case that just continued on and on. So we did have a water shut off for sure for a time. And there was a new mayor and he paid a big portion of the bill and agreed to, you know, the other way that by August 1st. And I had a discussion with him and a few days ago, asking the county. And, you know, in the case of council, I didn't see it, but I didn't know we paid that.
So all of it was due to over usage and attempts, leaks and attempts to fix that were made.
Not all of it used.
Well, no, no, you got, you got 20,000 gallons.
Yeah, so the 35 month deal, whatever. But efforts were made to locate a leak on his part.
On his part, on M and I, we went over and tried to isolate thing, tried to see if it was old sheds on this property. It was out there.
So why don't we forgive this? Why isn't this a, why isn't this a leak? Why is he paying this bill?
Because it wasn't attempted to be fixed in the proper timeframe.
But they're just telling me it was.
In the 30 day period, you know, he, he thought he had fixed it. Look at, read the meter, it wasn't fixed. Water was fixed, read the meter, it wasn't fixed. So there never was a fix.
But that can be hard, right? If I come and I find a leak in my hose or something, I got it, I nailed it, I fixed it. And he does, how can he tell that he's got a leak until we come back and say, oh, you overused again? Still got a leak?
And that's what we've done.
So I don't see how that's an obvious problem.
Also, through that interim 30 day period, if you think it got fixed, they can just shut your water off and run it under the meter. It's still permanent.
Sometimes people don't understand, we don't.
Did you discuss that with them?
Yes.
Many times.
Oh, you did discuss that?
Many times.
Oh, okay.
Many times.
I don't know if I, you know, I appreciate that, but I don't think it would be fair to give the hope. Because I can take sometimes some that went that long because of not fixing it, I probably should have couldn't fix it.
Okay.
That's the best thing I've heard all year.
Also, also, I don't want to pay the $2,000 either. Don't take me wrong, I don't want to pay that much, but if that's the case, well, nobody else has to pay for it either. If it's anybody you can blame, it's me. Nobody else has to.
Okay, if you understood that, that makes sense. So.
Do we have an agreement for two weeks or?
That's what he's proposed, happen next weekend and then in two weeks, the remainder. I can see where John's coming from with the leak. That leaks are hard. That's a tough deal.
You know, it's 60 days, but in two or three years.
You want to find out about that gas leak? I was washing my car one day and the bubbles of the soap came up from the drain. I saw it for now, where the leak was.
That's a gas leak?
That was a gas leak. No, it's.
Wow.
And it's not a small, I mean, it was a big area. Not a simple, it was a simple.
Sir, you are a good man.
So I think with John's thing, I'm, I think if he's willing to pay this, I'd say we get the first payment and forgive the second one. And you can pay it, we'll cut your bill in half, would be my proposal.
I just. I think we'll make that decision.
It's the council's decision.
I agree. It'll be $900.
Chair, entertain a motion to make whichever.
$900 by this weekend? Okay, then we'll forgive the other part. If you don't come through, then it'll add back on.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That's my motion.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? None? All in favor? Aye, all in favor?
Okay. Thank you for your hard work on that. I know that's been a tough one.
Down to a couple of weeks, baby.
You stand down my hand and hold.
Okay.
But it'll be even if she went through the week herself.
It'll be even. We got the survey out of the way. Is there anything else on the Daniel municipal side?
I don't know where you're, I visited the meeting last month and I don't know where you're at. Just with the bank of the property. For, yeah, we're going to extend the line up. No, we're not. The guy's on my hook on, well, I don't know, where are we at on that?
Ryan's not here, Eric might be.
You don't pass that to everybody, you'll have a very last minute of that.
So we've had resident on South Phil Road said that he'll get a lawyer. We've had our attorney give us his opinion about the right of way. And so we've talked about the right of way with our attorney. We have his opinion to send a letter to tell him to produce the evidence that we can't dig through that right of way and then come in. I believe that's where we're headed in that direction right now. That's why we pay our attorney.
So, so my answer is, is that bankers start building in 60 days, they won't want, what are we getting?
We ain't going to have it in 60 days.
We turned in a will serve letter and they know that it will be there when we get it there. But we did tell them they won't get a certificate of occupancy till it is there.
So what about our timetable in October for?
Well, our problem is going to be, we've bid this out and we've had notice of commencement as a supplier. And so we had a hard time getting the gas line to come mark. And we knew that would be a change order if, if all of a sudden we started digging and then he finds a utility. What we didn't acknowledge was there, it would be a change order. So we, we went through the process and did several blue stake requests, finally got the gas company out. And we have walked with the excavator, so he's aware of what's there. We did not proceed with the fence relocation based on the threat of a lawsuit against the town. We was going to move the fence in our earlier discussions. We, we have not offered that to the, to the landowner based on that we probably will be. We have incurred costs, legal costs already, just by the threat of a lawsuit. So we will take the fence down. Fences aren't allowed in the, in the town right of way. It's been erected, there used to be a ditch there, it's been sent out to the edge of the asphalt. We will be taking that down. We're not above, still working that out. But if it turns, we won't be spending extra money on it.
So my understanding is that the town, if it fence up, it would not relocate it in the.
If we incur other costs, we're not going to have the money to put the fence back.
She would put it back in right of way anyway, is that correct?
We would not put it back in the right of way.
That's, that's, everybody knows that, that's basically it.
I don't know if everybody is, but many people are.
Yeah.
The guys out inspecting are aware of that. So that's where that stands. I think we're, we're just trying to hook up with, with our contractor, make sure he's on board. We've looked at crossing the road, there's irrigation on the other side. We have to cross a federal pipeline as well as the Daniel irrigation line.
So, but the line would stay on the east side of the road?
For multiple engineering reasons, it will stay on that side of the road. But I think we're ready to move forward and accept that once the letter goes out and we give in that notice to. David might have something to say about that, so. Thank you, Governor, thank you. Does that help, Gary?
Yeah, I just didn't want to get called because I have to manage a little water.
Yeah, they tried to get their septic approved last week in the health department. We didn't approve it until we gave them a will serve letter. So that went out, Ryan issued that. So it's good to know the health department's watching, so.
So the woman on the south end of the road, he was going to.
He is confirmed that he's willing to. Again, we should have this discussion about the fire hookup. Fire flow hookup, what we're going to do with that. I'm sure that's going to be a request on that particular house. It's very large. So we don't have a policy in place.
But we have the, there's only a few options, a bigger meter to take it in or him to have his own tank. I mean, I mean.
Well, doesn't the fire marshal, don't he supersede that anyway?
Well, he won't get a building, once his building was approved, it had to have a certain fire flow and he has to make that.
And what was it, was that approved for sprinkler system or how was that approved?
It is approved for, it's required sprinklers, so.
But the supply hasn't yet to be determined?
Right. He can supply it from the well or from us, but we don't have an additional cost for a fire flow on a hookup on the house. We haven't had to, we haven't had that situation.
Time or pipe or whatever, it's just to serve residents.
Right, all we have is just the meter sizes. So if he needs a bigger flow, he'll have to go up on the meter size, which is more a month. That's all we have in place of this stuff at this time.
Pluggable inch?
We go up to three inches.
Doesn't he?
Yeah.
Doesn't that builder have the option of putting in a tank?
He does. Yeah, if he had a well, I'm sure that's what he would do is put in a tank. But whatever they worked out with the fire department as well will be.
To get to the fire flow, Eric, what is it, an inch and a half, two inch and a half?
It depends on who you talk to is what they. Ryan says he can design a system that'll flow it on a three quarter meter.
Oh, really?
So it sounds like the old fire marshal that is since retired told me it couldn't be less than an inch. So I have several different.
If we have one other house across from two farms that's also got that same situation, in fact, he'll be coming in quite quicker than one down on.
He's come in to see me and talked about his five eighths reduced to the inch. And so he's already kind of drawn out and explained all the situations. He said, he's past the point of, for him, but he would want me to know maybe in case there's others out there that have those kind of situations.
So what was his fix?
I don't know if he put his own tank in or what, but he's, he.
Yeah, because he had a comment about a bigger meter.
He told me he got it fixed, but wanted me to agree. Why would this be, it's like, it was probably before the town was a town. And I don't know, I've heard there's only, I mean, there's a few, whatever, few whether, a few of them, not all of them are like that, because a lot will search back out.
Yeah, it, here, the pressurized tanks, sprinklers, is by far the cheapest way for them to go along on that side.
I, I think. However, they make the fire department happy, they sign off on their plan, we don't build.
How big a tanks do they need for something like that, do you know?
I don't know the volume, so it's only required for so many minutes of sprinkling.
I got a certain flow.
So it could be a 500 gallon tank or something.
I think you got one, don't you Scott?
What's that?
You got a tank, didn't you? Do you have a fire flow tank down at your place?
Yep.
So he's, he's got one.
No, I don't have a tank. I don't have a tank. I have a sprinkling system in the room.
Oh, it's just a little, you don't have a tank?
I don't have a tank.
So I don't know how big they are? I don't know. Fire marshal decides that, I can't.
I have a question. For some reason, on all those discussions about the water line and the right of way and everything, I thought the discussion was that you were running like a water main that was big enough to service multiple homes towards.
Yeah, it's an eight inch line. But we're talking about a service line running to his house.
All from there.
Because right now, we only, we've done a three quarter meters running to one.
So you do, you do meter fire lines and you, anyway.
Normally, because what, what happens, especially on residential, what could happen is they just tap into that.
Yep.
Then we have a metered water going. So not, not the fact that we don't have the water, it's the fact that we can't account for it. So we think we have a leak somewhere else. That was our problem with the county, is all this water disappearing and we're like, where's it going? Because we metered coming out of the tank, but where's it going? So we think we have a leak. So we're running around looking for a leak and we actually have a user.
Well, plus that county has an open.
And you open a fire ladder, it's probably the one.
It is. Okay. The only other thing was your secretary.
Oh, yeah. So I, I understand that it was, the stuff was way, it was way in depth as more than one, anyone thought the job would pay. I don't know where that description comes from.
I put it in there. What part do you like?
I, I didn't even read it. I was getting comments back from people that, I asked them for one to confirm if she might apply. And I talked to several people that said that they didn't understand qualifications for the job, because it seemed like it was going right into somebody else's job that works for the town. So I, I'm an action person, ready to just take a moment, it's up to me.
What do you got?
I, um.
What part do you like?
Three quarters of it. Really, when I got done and saw that and printed it off, I put question marks on three sections of it, because I never did any of that. As water secretary, I created the bills, I nailed them out, I, I took the payments and I pretty much tried to, what's that called? I got irritation calls and stuff, I'm being, and I, you know.
Those buffer calls. Buffer calls. Buffer calls, oh.
Buffer, buffer.
I got it, yeah.
For the buffer.
If something I couldn't handle, I said, you call killer Gary and I didn't have him on Gary's phone numbers and I said, you call. But there were three sections on that that I put question marks on, because I didn't ever, I didn't have any.
Some of the things should be, there are things I do.
Again, again, I took that right off the water website and their qualifications. And so if, if, if the secretary should be willing, we just went over the state law. If they have to attach a bill to a, to a tax, the secretary ought to be able to do that. They ought to be able to go to the county, attach the water bill, hook it to the taxes. They should be able to do that. That's why that's included.
But she, the trial balance and that kind of stuff, she had some.
Again, Gary's the manager and he managed that how he wanted. Those are why, those are why, I'm not running the water company. I am telling you the qualifications the secretary should have. I was going to say, there's some things you don't do. There's a ton of things in my job that I'm qualified for that I don't do, but I have the qualification to do it. So I pulled that off the water website and what was applicable, we put in our ad. So I think that's an important thing. If you have to attach a property tax, I think you should be aware of that. I don't want to hear, well, that wasn't in my job description. There it is.
It's just the stuff that I give, so I put question marks on those because I thought, I don't understand, nobody qualified me for it, so.
Yeah, some of the county stuff, it has nothing to do with bills.
I think the salary had a problem too.
Yeah, it looked like we had underchanged that from.
She was doing a whole lot more for all this than.
So we probably. So, we probably should redo that ad with the correct, uh, wages. Run that ad again with, unless somebody wants to take something out of that, you're, you're welcome to do that. We had a resignation, and we're trying to fill positions.
I think we've had three applicants at this point?
Five, two, three.
Oh, five, two.
I, I don't know that a job announcement is, is where you need to list all the qualifications, that, that if it, if it's... If it's not understandable by people who are doing the job now, that have done a great job, it seems like those might come at a later time. Um, if someone asked me how I do that, I wouldn't know right now either, but I could go down to the county or wherever I need to go and find out how to do it. So, so I, I'd vote for a simple and clear, and get some people to apply, and then talk to them about this.
So just run the top of that, the top section of that ad?
I haven't read it, so I don't know, I just, in general say that.
But I had like three women come up to me and say, "Okay, so what does this mean?" And I said, "I don't know." I never seen any of that.
We might have, we're, we're the government, you're not supposed to understand.
In answer to your question, I would say yes, the top part of it, 'cause the bottom part seemed to better describe what was up there. Just keep it succinct.
The top's reasonable. The top says to send the resume to Mary.
Right. So I think if we just include that top section, and then when they send a resume to you...
Revisions from the four hundred, to, you had on there, to five thirty-five.
To the five thirty-five. Whatever it is. Or whatever it is. I don't know, if we got five applicants at four hundred. Hey, we don't wanna run that ad. But if we just run that top piece, and then, Gary, have you read that?
The head of the way?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
You probably should approve that. You're our water manager, you should probably approve that. I was just on the slide.
I heard of like, via telephone, Kathy called me, I had no idea what was going on.
I got a smoke signal, so I got it before you.
Do you wanna put a closing time on, when you're not...
Yeah, 'cause there's no closing time.
Well, I think open till positions filled works.
Is that, is that what it said?
Mary, will you add that, open till position filled?
And I'm assuming we're gonna take time to be now, by the next meeting, or at least, or to look at the...
I think it'll be...
Does this person have, have to be a citizen of the town?
No, how do you...
Not necessarily.
No.
No, that's not one of the qualifications. Yeah, I think if you...
And then will you all meet together, as a form, wherever, um, to go over all the applications together, and you all decide together, who you think that's best?
No, that's a human resource department. Well, we don't have one, yeah, I guess we may.
You're, you're, you're cutting everything out.
I, I think, I think that's the plan, is to have, is to have those be able to help.
Dang it.
You're a paid in, and vote, and I don't, first of all, it's gonna work fast.
We'll probably have to go into closed session. And we'll be talking about the character of people. We'll probably go into a closed session and decide, but we will come out to do appointments in the public meeting. To be in compliance with laws, since our lawyer's here. Yeah.
Gary, would you look at that ad and make sure that you agree with Osama?
She's gonna re-read it, and I'll look at it.
Okay.
Just give me a moment, you're gonna re-read it, re-read it.
I, I don't, did I not send that to you?
I can say that I never, I just, they said it was gonna have a wave, I don't know which wave it was, but take it, and...
Osama, yeah.
She said some stuff, she didn't understand it, if you don't do it, there's nothing.
Right, some of those things were the testing from the states, you should have the testing schedule, you should be aware of those, and when those tests are due. This, the last report that just went out with our water quality, every one of those violations was a lake test, or a test that was out of order.
We don't order that stamp.
Yeah, well...
That was an easy fix, I mean, you don't play, it's an easy fix.
Well, all the tests, yeah, but they, we incurred points on our water system, and those are points that we shouldn't have.
We should have, but, uh, I think we're good enough that...
And that's why I say the secretary should be aware of that, be able to, to make sure that all these things are done at the state level.
Well, it was one of the minerals, where one secretary was replaced, another secretary had to come in.
And really, I wouldn't have gotten involved except for the water quality report came out, and it was late too. So, it was already late, we had to do that, like, the last word, so I'm like, we gotta do something, so that's what we did, we used the water.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't, I just spoke to him in part and submitted.
I know, I talked to him in May, we talked to him in May about it, he just fell in the trash, but okay.
Hey, can I ask a clarification?
Yes.
Are you intending to do this in a closed session next month? Do you want to run for the next consecutive weeks and tell back session?
Well, if it's open till, I think we do have the closed session to discuss what we have in our next meeting.
The ad, right?
No, in our next meeting.
So that's what I'm saying, so do you want to run every week and tell back session?
For four weeks until next meeting?
I don't know, that costs a whole thing. I remember for two weeks, I think, three nights.
So you want two months?
But this week is gonna be the same ad, because it's too late.
Well, it'll still be open till filled, but we're just gonna run the ad for two weeks.
This one will be, you might wanna do three, this one coming out will be the same old, it won't be the new revision.
No, it's too late, we didn't...
We only did it one week, so, it won't be anything this week. Gary, you're the water manager. Tell her if you wanna run two weeks.
Just one more week?
Put it as revision, on the qualifications for that. Is that okay?
Yeah. You're the water manager. Kinda turn the handle on the bush, or something like that, to...
We do the public business in public. Two weeks in line, yeah. Okay.
If we're off of that, that cleared out? We have another question, probably, this fellow's name is Alan Stoner, and he was with, uh, he had a rental that he says he had on contract sale, and we constantly had trouble collecting that money from the so-called contracted rentals. When they left, they had a two-hundred-and-eighty dollar bounty. But we went and turned the water off, we're un, we were under the assumption at that time, that the renter was the owner of the house. Well, some year and a half later, I had gone to the reporter's office, this was last month, and found the, the property owner, as a matter of record, sent him a registered letter that says you owe us eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that we have received a payment, uh, since July of two sixteen. He went and seen Kathy, Joe, and left ninety dollars, and said he didn't own the house, it was under contract. Yet he paid the taxes on the house, the back taxes. Now, what do you want me to do with that, what do you want us to do with it? Luckily tonight, we probably might discuss it, and he might be able to, they might be able to share something.
The, um, the legal owner, the owner of record, shouldn't remain responsible. The legal owner would have a contract remedy against the buyer, and that's between the owner and the buyer. Our relationship should be under...
So would this be, um, a problem where we could just, is it wanna shut up now, or not? No, but I am gonna shut it off, hearing that. Or I should, maybe I shouldn't shut it off.
Well, we, we just, we need to know if by any owner, like, for the second time or third time, that he is responsible for, for, for the termination of the council, and he's responsible for the water, and he is the owner of the property, and he doesn't want to pay the bill, or his parents, or whatever it is, we need a water...
Yep, yep.
So how much does he owe? Um, have you given, have you told him he could come for the council?
Yes, he was supposed to be...
He said he was gonna be here tonight. Okay.
Just put a clarification there.
Well, I think he, because some of the mills in mind, and he can, to the town, he was gonna take us to court or something.
He just doesn't feel like he owns the... I'd like to just follow the rules like we would with anybody else, and just, yep.
Pay your pay up or...
He can do what he's gotta do, but we need to do it on his...
So we have a few of these homes in the town that have left with water bills owing. I don't think we should be turning the water back on for another individual, till it's either resolved, or they buy a hookup. I agree.
There is a provision in the code that says you can't, um, assess, uh, pass due balances against new owners.
Right.
But if he's, if he's not the owner of record, then, then he doesn't have that to him.
Okay, so let me ask you this. If we have an individual that has moved out, we have a, a balance owing, they've been gone longer than a year, they request water hookup, can we sell them a new hookup? Has that been abandoned for a year, is that no longer a valid hookup?
No.
Maybe not.
I'll have to look at your rules on that.
No, you can't, it, it doesn't matter how long the house is unoccupied, the owner of the property is still the responsibility...
Talking about a new owner coming in?
If they have bought it, and it's our responsibility, that if there is an actual sale, a transaction that goes, that we collect our money. Either, most, most times what has happened, is the title company will notify and say, is there any outstanding? They'll notify, they have notified us, and said, is there any outstanding bill, so we check and say, yeah, there is, no, there isn't, and it proceeds forward, right?
But if that hasn't happened, and we've had a house that's empty for a year, are we obligated to turn on or...
If, if they come forward and, um, allow the application to the new owner, you're obligated to turn it on.
Yeah, with a new hookup fee?
No.
No.
The hookup fee is, uh, unless you have an abandonment of a hookup process, that hookup fee is one-time.
Okay.
Can that fee that's left owing, is that registered in with the state? Or is it, does it go against, like, a lien against the house as far as the taxes?
If you don't have the application and contract signed, you cannot open a lien on the house.
Correct.
Okay? So this, this particular guy does not have a contract signed with the town.
Right, at all?
At all. The, the owner or the renter? No, the owner. So, I, I believe the, the tax, he certified it in the town, he can collect it with the taxes, would apply to the cities. I know it applies to districts, I think it applies to cities, so that process can be filed, whether or not, or follows, whether or not you have a signed service period.
Right, but we're limited by that statute to two hundred dollars.
That's a different statute, that, that statute's, uh...
That's a mess too.
A real mess, I think that's the craziest statute I've seen on the books of law, I guess.
Okay, if, if in fact...
That's if you actually go to collect it, but you can't go through the certified tax, uh, certifying it to the county.
Can we put the attorney's on top of the certified tax? Can we make it part of the certified tax, the attorney fees?
Uh, no, not, not under that statute, see, that statute, I think, limits the attorney.
Unless you got the contract.
Something like to a hundred dollars.
It does, one of those.
All we can legally, like, my understanding, over the years I've been involved, is we can only collect the outstanding.
Now, it's got the water off, and it can issue with the state, so the title company...
We have a fifty on, fifty off type thing, we cover that. But this particular property, they're talking about, you know, spending the owner's thing for quite some time. But we've had, there's been various renters in there, and we've worked with them, and worked with them, and there've been different entities that's paid the bill for them, and kept them caught up, and helped them hide, and so, uh, the understanding for the guy that went in there was that he was gonna take care of the water bill, but evidently he doesn't have the financial ability to do that, so...
That's how the water got turned back on, which shouldn't have, obviously, first one to that, it's the good guy gets that effect, but, uh, there was also plumbing and electric going on in that house, when I was invited in, to talk about the water bill. There was a repair, a head issue on that house. So the good guy's got a little sour here, I think.
So as far as this situation, you've heard, and turn that, that just solved the problem in this case? Yep.
So, so what is it that Kathy's supposed to do?
I'm retired.
She's starting to get the letter in sooner than mine. By the way, uh, it really should be the duty of this new water secretary to make the calls, where, where the council has passed this resolution that says you have forty-five days, and we demand our money, but they have the phone numbers, uh, she has all the books, the entry. That should be part of her duty, not a guy like me with a pick and shovel, no phone numbers.
You'll have to talk to the water manager.
I will, I'll check. Okay, my second item, and this is probably, um, it's not because of frustration or anything else, but I am going to get out of the water, uh, October second. So a verbal resignation, but a paper or a follow-up taken?
Motion is not accepted.
I agree. I think I'm on record, I'm on record tonight, on October second, I would do the October first removal, so, but then, I've been at this for ten years. Enjoyed every minute of it, except elections. But it's, it's time for me to move on.
Okay, motion denied.
I'll second that, I'll answer that.
More discussion.
I told you, Kim, they'd be stunned, did you see they all just kinda looked at you? I said, you gotta be stunned.
It's hard, it's hard, we have, we don't, there's no, they work hard, there's no benefit, so it kinda makes up for it. We, we appreciate what you do.
That kinda makes up for it?
No, I, I, I think it was, it was true, but it's time for me to move on. Gary, is there...
We're gonna miss you.
Is there a, is there someone who can, is Val, would you step up?
When Kim told me this, I, I talked to Val, and Val's agreed, that, that trained him and I, and reading some of what they need, and, and that kinda stuff, but, uh, as far as the other part of it, you don't want nothing to be a politician.
Yeah, so... Well, for a long time, we've talked about this point coming, and it seems like we're getting closer to a point for that, and that's probably gonna be a discussion we're gonna have here real quick.
Yeah.
Thanks for all your work.
I was gonna say, from the council's point, I, I... Absolutely, Kim, thank you, non-word, all the work that I've been doing.
No one likes a quitter.
Keep claiming it. Even if you text after the meeting.
Says the poor planner.
Well, Barbara may have something to say about that, I, I don't know, maybe, keep thinking, hopefully, I'll really think hard and say what I have.
I'm gonna have to call, say, you really want twenty-four hours a day, how about just, you know, maybe like an eighteen hours a day?
They've been great, 'cause I, you know, I try to work full-time job, and, you know, I just, I don't want to be, other things, you know, to be...
Yes.
It's great to have you.
Because as we transition this town, it's been, that's been hard. Got a lot of, I mean, the small pins we get paid is ridiculous for what we do, and it's crazy, and then they treat you mad to boot. What's that?
It's a labor of love.
Some things you wonder, don't you? I totally understand.
Wait any time, alright?
Scott, Scott wants to volunteer, he's got that look on his face.
But I'd, I'd like to say something else, so if we're done with everything else.
We're getting real close, my, my subject is having to do with...
It, it's me.
Okay, we're talking here.
Okay, well...
I have a question on the water. I've been helping Kathy do water and me and her kind of need a clarification on the Wasatch County, what is the rates? So, we know.
Which, oh, the public works?
Yeah, the public works.
They already approved the amount.
Oh, did you get it all taken care of?
Yeah, they approved $315 for each one.
Okay. That's what we was checking.
Yeah, they, somewhere online, somebody approved $315 for both those meters.
I thought it was $90 each one.
That's why I was checking.
No, no.
No, the county has always been under one meter, the existing meter, it's been $90.
$90.
I don't, excuse me, I don't know where that came from.
I can show you the document where that came from.
Okay, then we have a second document that talks about meter size. We don't have any resolution that deals with a four-inch meter. We went up to three inches. And so, the predicament was in with the elementary school is we ended up giving them the 315. And they have a four-inch meter, but that was the three-inch meter price, okay?
Yeah, and the reason that happened was because the plan showed a three-inch meter.
But that's what they're getting billed at. But they're getting billed anything above the $20,000. And I think with a three-inch meter.
You're allowed more gallons.
You're allowed more gallons. So, when they say it's resolved.
Okay, we talked about this a couple of months ago and we said the second meter goes in at the same price the other one was. So, I thought we had 90 on each meter. So, he was going to treat those commercial Wasatch County the same, both meters, they would both be the same price.
Okay, that's good for the county, but why would you charge the school more money than you do the county?
Well, there's a couple of reasons. They provide our snowplow removal, they supply the fire protection. Everything goes through the county. And so, that agreement was met when they put the line down 3,000 miles. They put in that mild line and that's when that agreement was signed with Kent Burke, the public works director. And so, that agreement is, I have, you should have that agreement.
Well, when we have the, when we created the bills, somebody told the lawyers to put in $315 because they usually put in the auto payments because almost everybody's 35. So, they set it up and when we went to their bill, it automatically said $315 for the two separate.
You were, you were under the instruction that I gave you based upon this resolution.
Yeah.
But with the county and the way it's supposed to go, we've got to get back with the software people and have them put, put them both at 90 and a base rate of 20,000.
35,000, I believe is that. Don't quote me on the gallons. It's in that document also.
Sorry Kathy, just clarifying.
In the agreement?
In the agreement is the water. And I can tell you that Kent Burke, because he came over my driveway and told me, if these guys charge me more money, I can guarantee you I will use every gallon I'm allowed and I will run it on the ground. So, there was some tension there before we got out of there.
And then you give the guy a break?
This is the resolution. We came to a agreement. I told him we'd just turn it off.
Has it come up from the county as far as the new bill in the mound, like it was an issue at all at this point?
They just went out. Those just went out.
The very first one to them.
Yeah, called for it.
And it wasn't, it wasn't the 315, both of them. And that's what me and Kathy had noticed, that it was before something else and then it was 315 for both. That's why I asked if we could have clarification of what is it supposed to be so we could get that fixed.
Very good question to ask.
So, Gary, do you have access to that or do you want me to look it up?
Access if you want.
What that document Kent Burke signed with the water company?
Well, what you're speaking on and what I know of, so we have that.
What were you told the bill on the over there?
So, you don't have that document or you want me to produce that document? Okay, I can do that.
I'd like to see the date of the document.
Okay, I'll just give you a copy of the document. I don't know why I have it.
So, I have, I have other suggestions.
I didn't sign this paper. It was signed by the water company, not me.
So, that was, that was the four we were at town?
Yes.
So, that was either signed by the governor or.
That was the one too, right?
I'll give you that.
Okay. Eric, what did, what did you say you thought the overuse gallons or the base rate gallons?
Well, they charged them 90, but I believe they, what was we at? What was our old rate? It was double that.
Gallons, it's our old rate, 40,000 down to $40,000.
20,000?
40,000.
40.
40,000. We're at 20,000 now. For the, for the residents, each individual resident is allowed $20,000 for a $35 a month.
If you're still in public works, every time I send out a bill, they got charged for $35 for both places. Before Kent separated, they got charged $35 for 20,000 again.
Yeah, and my understanding was.
And that's been, how long? We have some, the secretary and.
They were being charged 90 one day.
90 all from the beginning, so.
Well.
No, we're not a, we're a district.
You're probably going to make a call either way.
The point I hear is.
Is that agreement, is that, is you committed your dollar?
The gallons?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, if it's a signed agreement, that's what we're going by.
So, the county should be charged the base rate on both meters of 90.
90, okay.
And then there is a.
Then there is a gallon use with that 90 that they're allowed up to this much.
But we don't get how much they use.
I can't, I have it in the document. I don't have it in front of me. I believe it was double what our old rate was. If that's, if what Gary's saying, that'd be 80,000 gallons. So, I believe that is from the press election, but again, I've been doing this a long time.
I want that.
You want $90 a month?
Yeah, with the 80 gallons, yeah.
80,000 gallons.
80,000 gallons.
That gives, that gives the county, that gives the county 160,000 gallons between the two meters.
No, it's 80,000 between the two meters.
Well, it's each meter, each meter. We did treat them different. They were treated, we said, we talked about that here in council, but we said, treat them the same. Whatever they got there, we're going to do here.
All right, just, just so that's on record.
Again.
It's really hard to have a four-inch meter and you got different rates flying, so if we've got that on record, I.
Yeah, commercial rates are different than what we have at the county, with the interloped agreement that we have.
That was a special agreement, can you add?
And we, you know, we remember back, we know why it is the council will come and figure issue on the usage.
Yeah, that document also sets restrictions on what the water use is. That does also spell that kind of document, so. But there's some things that are restricted there.
Okay.
Now, whether it's a legal document, that's not mine. It is a little right. Yes, you did. You're all on me by now, but I'm Stockholm, just to be ready. Right here, right now, let's decide what you would like me to do. If I'm, this is the first I've heard, I'm a man of action. Tell me what you want me to do about the dust. What can you do about the dust? I'll have them run their water truck down the road if that's what it takes. I've asked the guys to drag them first gear off to make dust, but I cannot control moisture content in that topsoil and they can't either. So, when they dump it, there's going to be a little bit of dust. We can water it down, but then we're loading it up.
So, so, is that a permitted use down there?
It's not a, it's not a down, it's industrial. It is, it's permitted.
It is permitted.
It is permitted. You're on what we do.
I've watched, I've watched your.
Would you have a gavel fit there for like?
Well.
And we don't want.
You're not, you're not the worst, I mean, in my opinion, you're not the worst offender by your, by your means.
I didn't know I was offending anyone because.
I, I, the neighbors have watched, you know, and I've watched because I come down there and I've watched your, I've watched the trucks coming in and I've watched the belly dump down for us and dump, dump for whatever it is.